I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education. I'd like to clarify on the record that the Board of Education has issues to discuss in executive session. But first of all, can you call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Niznik, here. Raj Paul. Sargent.
Sweeney Moran, here.
Z, here. Thank you.
May I have a motion to move into executive session?
I, Stacy Ziss, make a motion pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B to convene an executive session to confer with an attorney for the school board for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions relating to pending litigation on the following issues: federal litigation regarding race discrimination and CDE/EEOC/CCRD/OCR complaints alleging age, gender, race, and disability discrimination.
All right, may I have a...
Second.
Roll call?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul. Sargent. Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Ziss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good evening, everyone. I am so sorry we are running late. We had some legal matters we were attending to. Good evening, so good to see you all. Welcome to superintendent's honor roll here this March at BVSD. Robbie Anderson, proud superintendent. Again, thank you so much for your patience. We are not going to delay. We're going to jump right in. The first thing I was going to do is introduce our school board members, but I will do that at some point as they walk in because I do not want to delay anymore. Everybody get enough to eat, drink? Everybody's okay? All right. Very excited to celebrate you all this evening. So our first celebration, Julia Hunt. Where's Julia? Julia, come on up. A big round of applause. Let's get the evening started off right. So a Fairview student's passion for politics has paid off. Julia, as a senior night, was recently one of two Colorado students chosen for the U.S. Senate Youth Program. This is a program that was established back in 1962. This is the 61st year of the program. And it's created to provide students with a unique educational experience for students who are interested in pursuing careers in public service, which is fantastic. Julie and the other students from around the country had the opportunity to travel to Washington DC earlier this month to participate in Washington Week where they were able to meet a number of dignitaries, including President Biden.
Actually, he had to go to Pendleton, maybe?
Oh, come on. We'll have to send him a letter or something. A Supreme Court Justice and, of course, legislators. So Julia, if you don't mind, I'd love to ask you a couple of questions. I've got a, this sounds like such a fantastic opportunity. Give us the highlights. What was it like to be in Washington?
Yeah, it was definitely a pretty crazy experience. I've never been to Washington DC before, so I think seeing all of the buildings and where government actually happens was incredibly inspiring. I'd say one of the highlights was definitely meeting Senator Amy Klobuchar. I, yeah, it was very exciting. In ninth grade, I watched her in the 2019 presidential debates. And that was kind of what, part of the reason that I got involved in politics in the first place. So seeing her and getting the chance to thank her for the impact she's had on me was really exciting.
This is awesome. Another big round of applause for Julia. I think we're gonna take a picture or I'm gonna take this away from you and then give it back to you like it's the first time. Hold on. All right. For our next recognition, here in the Boulder Valley School District, I think that you all know that we take sustainability very seriously. As you may know, last school year, we adopted a new Sustainability Action Plan, built off the progress we made since our first plan was implemented in 2009. Really proud of what are some really notable accomplishments in the area of sustainability, including a 13% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions in the past five years and a 24% improvement in energy use. We're working to push things even further with goals in leadership, facilities, and operations, curriculum and instruction, climate, and culture. And all the work is led by our Sustainability Advisory Group, which is here tonight. So if we can get our Sustainability Advisory Group to come on up. We're so thankful for all of your service. So for everybody, thank you all so much. Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for all of your hard work and the progress that's already being made. The Green Schools National Network and the Center for Green Schools at the U.S. Green Building Council recently announced that BVSD is the winner of its Best of Green Schools Award in the Systems category. That's a round of applause. That's an incredible accomplishment. Jade, you look like you want to take a picture? Or just, you can snap away. You want me to come over there, stop talking, start taking pictures, and then I'll talk again? Okay. I don't think I'm done. This was, this award was announced at the beginning of this month during Green Schools Conference in New Orleans. This honor recognizes those that are showing their commitment to healthy, safe, and sustainable schools. Together, these people, schools, and organizations are working hard to push the green school movement forward. So I'd love for everybody to introduce themselves before you sit down. And then Gita, I've got a couple of questions that, for you. That'll be a surprise that you didn't know I was gonna ask, and you can answer those. So everybody introduce themselves, please.
Camilla Pollan, BVSD parent of Bear Creek Elementary, also a sustainability consultant.
Thank you, I'm Gita Carroll, and oversee sustainability for the Boulder Valley School District.
Hi, I'm Dr. Leslie Smith. I used to be a school board member, and I was instrumental in getting this awesome woman hired in BVSD.
Erin Greenwood, BVSD Science Coordinator.
Susan Cousins, BVSD Operations Communications Manager.
Kim Orr, EcoCycle, and a Boulder Valley School District parent as well.
And the chair of the committee. Bill Sutter, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the school district.
Rob Price, Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
And Marty Hertz, and I am the EcoEagles leader at Eisenhower.
Another great round of applause. And then Gita, if you, if I could just talk to you a little bit for the group, why don't you tell everybody a little bit more about, about our efforts and this recognition? This recognition is a really big deal.
Thank you, thank you so much. It is, it's an awesome recognition, and we were recognized really as our, being a national leader in our comprehensive approach to sustainability that's taken place over decades at this point. So in many areas, including green building design, indoor air quality, integrating sustainability into curriculum, green teams, sustainable transportation, and a lot more. And I know we saw that picture quickly, but I just want to say that other award recipients this year included the Department of Education, the Senator from, I believe, New Mexico, who introduced a bill to support outdoor learning funding, and a student who is a member of his Board of Education in his town fighting for climate action as a Board of Education member. So we were among great folks. It was a great honor to be there and representing the district.
Gita, thank you for all you do. Dr. Carroll, another round of applause, everyone. Fantastic. Do we need to do one more picture? Hey, Bill Sutter. Why don't you come on up? The script says to not wander too far, but you were already well, well gone. So why don't you head on up here? And if we can get representatives from the budget and accounting team to come on up. Here in the Boulder Valley School District, we're incredibly proud in the careful, responsible ways in which we handle the resources that taxpayers have entrusted us with. It's shown not only in the daily handing of our financials, but the materials produced by our Business Services Department, including our budget books and our annual comprehensive financial reports. Has anybody ever read through those? See, there you go. You thought that, that I knew it. They're incredibly impressive documents. It was evident a couple of weeks ago when our external auditors spoke to the board and the awards which we receive annually from both the Association of School Business Officials International and the Government Finance Officers Association. And while we like to refer to Bill, our Chief Financial Officer, and his award-winning team as award-winning, we definitely, let me tease him maybe a little bit from time to time. His team and his excellence and our business services team is truly phenomenal. For that reason, we're pleased to celebrate the teams behind the work that resulted in the following honors. And for our budget, the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021; the ASBO Materious Budget Award for the Excellence in the Preparation and Issuance of Its Budget for the Fiscal Year 2122; and in accounting, the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Year Ending June 30, 2021; and the ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the Year Ending June 30, 2021. So at this point, I'd love for everybody to introduce yourselves and tell us what your role is here at BVSD.
Bill Sutter, CFO.
Heather Groeters, District Accountant.
Carrie Albright, Budget Director.
Chris Buckholz, Executive Assistant Business Services.
Justin Patron, Director of Finance and Accounting.
I'm Crystal Dominguez, I'm a financial analyst.
Another round of applause for this amazing team. And Bill, just a couple of questions for you. If everybody wants to sit here and watch me grill, Bill, your team, you can stay real close if you'd like. You know, Bill, you make it look real, it's really easy. You've been doing it for so long here in BVSD. But as somebody who's worked in multiple districts, I know not everybody gets these awards. And I know how complicated the work is behind making sure that our budgeting and accounting practices are world-class so we continuously receive awards and recognition for those practices. Talk to us about some of the work that goes into putting these reports together.
It's much less with ChatGPT now because you can just request a budget document. We haven't tried that yet. We'll see. No, it's, it's an incredible amount of work to produce multiple 100, 200, 300-page documents a year, make sure they're all accurate and tied out and are accurately and fairly representing what the school district is trying to do on a programmatic basis, as is reflected in the financials in the district. So it's a lot of time-consuming work, but it's fun. Plus, you get bigger award, awards when they're, have to fit so many words on them. They just turn it to be a much bigger award.
I like that tactic. Round of applause, everyone, for our accounting and budgeting team. Thank you all. I'm gonna skip around in the agenda a little bit because from what I understand, we have some swimmers who have some things that they have to attend to, and that is important. This evening, we're excited to recognize some of our state champions in athletics and career technical education. And we're going to begin with swimming. A little more than a month ago, both 4A and 5A swimming championships were held at the Veterans Memorial Aquatic Center in Thornton, which is a beautiful facility if you've never been there before. If we could have all of our swimming champions come on up. And just lots of applause as they, as they walk up here. So on the first day of the championships, the Monarch High School Coyotes, Skoyotes, kicked off the swim meet with gusto, winning the 200-yard medley relay with a time of 1 minute 47.35 seconds. It is the first relay state title in school history. Love to have each of you introduce yourselves and share what year you are and what leg of the relay that you swam.
Hi, I'm Gwen Christensen. I swim the, the first leg. I swim 50 backstroke in the medley relay. I'm a sophomore.
I'm a Lennox. I'm also a sophomore at Monarch, and I swam the last leg, which is the 50 freestyle.
I'm Mia Prater. I'm a senior, and I swam the third leg, which is butterfly.
I'm Audrey Shambow, and I am a freshman, and I swam the second leg, which is the breaststroke leg.
And how many of you were Louisville Dolphins at one point in your lives? Yeah, very good. Go Louisville. So we're gonna take a picture, and then I'll introduce you, if that's okay? Because I know people have to go somewhere, so I wanna... And on the second day during the 5A finals, Boulder senior Zara Zalen won the 200 freestyle with a time of 1 minute 48.58 seconds. And Fairview senior Edith Zimasek touched the wall in 53.57 seconds to claim gold in 100 butterfly. And so I don't think both of them are here, though. Unless you're, unless you're Edith and Zara. How about a round of applause for Zara? So Zara, if from what I understand, when you, when you, when you won and you were on the podium, there was a kind of a funny, funny picture tweet that you tweeted. Who, who is that guy? Is he still, is he around somewhere? Ryan Bishop, everyone. Where you at, Ryan? That's it, there you go. We're the, would that be a fat head? Is that what they call those things? Or? A big head? Okay, very good. Well, congratulations, Zara. Let's take a picture and really just proud of all of our state champions in swimming. So here in BVSD, we're very lucky to have great educators supporting our schools from our libraries. And that is certainly the case at Centaurus High School, where Shashana Tergel has always working to expand learning opportunities for the warriors, regularly bringing in nationally-known authors. Come on up, Shashana, it's good to see you. Recently, she earned a designation from the Colorado Department of Education that highlights her hard work. Shashana recently earned the Highly Effective Schools Through Libraries Designation, which is given to outstanding library programs and teachers, librarians by CDE and the Colorado State Library. CDE is Colorado Department of Education. In order to achieve this designation, she had to show her expertise in five areas: planning, instruction, leadership, environment, and management. Additionally, as they say, it takes dream work to make the teamwork, or it takes teamwork to make the dream work. Yep, I got that right. As part of this designation, Centaurus Principal Dan Ryan and Assistant Principal Carolyn Carroll were acknowledged for their dedicated support of the school's library program. So congratulations, Shashana, and the entire Centaurus team. Let's give them a hand. Another round of applause. We're also excited to share that we have a BVSD Social Studies teacher recently that was recognized at the state level by her peers. Broomfield High School teacher Odette E. Brook, Ed Brook, come on up. Odette was recognized as the Outstanding Educator of the Year by the Colorado Council for Social Studies. Every year, the organization recognizes exceptional classroom social studies teachers. She received the honor during their recent conference at the History Colorado Center in downtown Denver. Broomfield High Principal Ginger Ramsey says one of the things that really stands out about Odette is the creativity she brings to the classroom. She consistently creates opportunities for students to be actively engaged in their lessons like a hands-on digging activity in anthropology. Odette, I would love to know, what is one of your favorite activities that you did this year with your kids?
Oh, gosh, I liked them all. Not because I did them, but because you're with the kids. We do do an archaeological dig in anthropology. This year, we also got to, I know we're not allowed to have weapons in schools, but we channeled our inner hunter-gatherers and learned how to throw adal-adas so that we can kind of find food for our tribes during our Neolithic Revolution.
Another round of applause, and let's take a picture. Do you remember when I said I was gonna introduce our Board of Education? Now would be that time. Board members, we got started, we, I told everybody we're finishing up. So we have our Board President up front, Kathy Gebhardt. Kathy, wave. Board members, as I call your name, please wave. Board Member Stacy Ziss. Over here to my right, Board Member Kitty Sargent. Board Member Beth Niznik. Board Member in the back, Richard Garcia. And Board Member Lisa Sweeney Moran is, I think she may have had to step away. But just want to thank them all publicly for all the work that they do. You know, I'm really proud of the work we do here in BVSD and having really strong board members and a strong board and governance team is an important part of that. So a big round of applause for board members. And back to the show, which I'm skipping around a bit, so I hope, Randy, I don't miss anything. How many of you like to play golf? Golf's a wonderful sport. Hard to play in the snow, but when it's sunny out, it's definitely a lovely, a lovely hobby. Girls' golf is just getting underway, but last fall, a BVSA student athlete was at the top of the podium in boys' golf. Caleb Michaels, come on up. Caleb represented the Yotes well in October at the City Park Golf Course in Denver. Caleb finally won the tournament that had long frustrated him. He qualified and competed in the state tourney every year of high school. It wasn't until his, this year, his senior year, that he captured the boys' 5A state title in boys' golf. That's a big deal. His perseverance paid off, and his play this year made quite an impression. Daily Camera also named him golfer of the year, and he has his sights set even higher. He's been playing in the PGA's Junior Golf Division. Was featured during the American Junior Golf Association Senior Showcase. Good luck, Caleb. Would love to hear about that final round. Any memorable shots you'd want to share?
On the eighth hole, I hit an eight iron from 180 to probably three inches, and no one clapped for me. And I was pretty upset about that.
Hey, let's make that right, right now! A ball clap, everybody! Another round of applause for Caleb. Wonderful, wonderful job. He shot three under in, in the winning round, and I told him I couldn't shoot three under. Ever, I've never even shot. Maybe, I can't shoot one under. If I got par, I'd be lucky, typically double, but I just typically pick up after I'm playing. So nice to see you. That's, that's an awesome recognition. And finally, tonight, students from our health science programs recently attended the host of Future Health Professional State Leadership Conference in downtown Denver. We're proud this evening to honor the two BVSD students who won top honors. To have Emerson Guerwing and Dana Dial come on up. High school students from across the state had the opportunity to network, learn leadership skills, and finally compete in health competitions. Emerson Guerwing, a junior at Fairview High School, won the gold medal in anatomy and physiology. That is amazing. And Dana Dial, senior at Fairview, won the gold medal in pharmacology. So congratulations, that's, that's a big deal. Could you, could one or both of you tell us what it's like to be at a conference like this? And kind of what did you learn from the experience? And introduce yourself.
I'm Emerson Guerwing. I think it was, it was an experience that I will always remember because it was like a first step into the professional world. It was structured like a professional conference. There were keynote speakers, and there were also people who came in from like CU and the Army and the sponsors, and they came in and kind of did a sales pitch. And it felt like we were learning a lot, but also kind of learning to network as well as just learning how to, you know, be adults, I guess.
I agree with what Emmy said. I'm Dana, and it was also really cool to be with so many other students who were so passionate about medicine and really excited to learn everything. And we got to try so many new skills. There was a suture workshop that was really fun, and it was so many great experiences.
Well, congratulations to both of you. You made us all very, very proud. Jade, you ready for a picture? You look ready. Another round of applause. I can't see Randy, but I know he's through that window right there. And I'm just double-checking that because I skipped around. I didn't miss any awards that were supposed to be given this evening. I got a thumbs up through a third party. That works for me. Folks, thanks so much for being here. Thanks so much for your support of our school district, for all that you've done. It's just an honor to get a chance to see you all, recognize you, have a chance to come together. Appreciate all that you do. Thanks so much. Have a great rest of the week, have a great spring break, and have a great rest of the school year. Thanks, everybody.
Project SERVE. That, I saw the Marshall Fire was...
So that's a federal grant that is, it was initially started, I believe, for school shootings, but they have expanded the opportunity for, opportunity, terrible word, for other traumatic experiences in schools. And so we applied for that related to the Marshall Fire. So that's providing some resources for mental health largely, I believe.
Okay, because I see we have two lines for it. One is just Project SERVE. So that must be the original, in case there's a school shooting or something. And then there's the one underneath it, it's on page 18. It says Project SERVE, Marshall Fire. But those are both used for support services for students?
I'm not entirely sure what the... I'm not entirely sure what the $837 is, or the $13,000 from the prior year. I have to verify what that particular thing is, as opposed to the Marshall Fire, which was definitely related. We haven't had a school shooting in Boulder Valley.
Thank God, thank you.
Is it too soon to tell what the impact, financial impact will be to the District of Early Childhood and the change of funding from the state? When will we know that? Because I know we're just going to have to pick it up. I don't think the state's going to give it to us.
Correct. The state will provide the per pupil amount that they've identified at the various LCO, because it's different, right, for different LCOs. The challenge really is the split between the three funding sources. We used to have just two, right? We either counted a student in the pupil count, a student with special needs, or CPP student, or they were tuition students, so they were counted or tuition students. So now we have the four-year-olds, the four-year-olds that qualify for more services, the four-year-olds that qualify, the less services, the three-year-olds that qualify for services and are funded, the three-year-olds that don't qualify, and then the tuition-based side. So we'll really have to get our legs under us for a year to see how all that comes together. And again, because it's a cycle, it's unclear. I believe I've heard they're making quarterly payments from the new department. So if a student shows up one month late, do we get the, that first quarter payment? Do we only get funding in the next quarter? Or, I don't know, so we'll see. I think there's a lot of determination. Last I heard, Cherry Creek didn't have hardly any of their sites open because of some of those challenges with the website, and the state was reaching their projected number of total seats they had available, so Cherry Creek's going to have a lot of seats available, so...
No money.
Put some pressure on things. But it's still rural areas that have been used to getting per pupil funding, rural or small districts, really small districts, where the funding may have been $12,000 to $14,000 a student, and now it's, and they would get half of that, so $6,000 to $7,000 a student, and now they're maybe getting five or six, like, so it'll be interesting to see how this all plays out on a statewide basis.
Will we have at least some sense in the fall?
Oh, yes. I mean, as we're getting the enrollments processed, because it's the request for the location and then matching up that, and then are there the seats available, so that's a very in-depth process to go through to shake everybody out. As we get through the next probably three months' worth of that processing, we'll have a better handle on what sites are all filled, what sites still have space available. And then, as had been our practice for a long time, related to both CPP program and serving students with special needs, a student turns three and they show up, we start serving them, so that can be anytime throughout the year. So there has to be some seats available. So that's the biggest challenge going forward.
So we don't know if they'll pay us for holding seats, and we also, is there like an enrollment date? Like, if they show up on November 1st and they're not sped, we don't know. So can we get an update, Rob, in the fall about what the funding is looking like? Because I have a sense that we'll have a better sense, and I'm guessing there's going to be some support the district has to reach into its general fund to support these kids.
And certainly, I mean, the district has been putting in over $5 million a year into preschool education as was part of the plan from the 20... I don't remember which override even it was.
Right, our preschool, our kindergarten override, yeah.
So, anyway, we've been providing those extra resources. So that's where it's a challenge for those districts that haven't been doing that. So we're kind of a leg up on most districts because we've already been providing those extra resources. So the plan is that the, that there won't be an additional investment needed if everything falls out correctly, so.
Always falls out correctly, doesn't it, Bill?
Yes, well...
Similar question for lunch. I assume there'll be a general fund hit because, for all the reasons you identified, the state's not going to backfill if we have more kids sign up, fewer kids sign up for free and reduced lunch. There's a formula, and the districts are left to pick up whatever the state doesn't pick up?
Yes, which has always been the case. I mean, right, if, just whether it was the federal program that was picking it up, or the state didn't have a, they'd been picking up the breakfast side of things for a while. The difference between, I think, reduced and free, anyway. The, again, the challenge is, were there projections of what they thought was going to fund this as a statewide basis enough? And what happens if it isn't? There's definitely resources at the state level if they don't decide to spend them all in the next month and a half. But that's, those are largely one-time resources, and those are resources that could have gone back to general education activities or funding school districts for the negative factor and all that. So there are some concerns that the, both of these programs will require dollars either at the state level or at the local level, one way or the other, as a new mandate.
If I had to guess, it'd be the local level, wouldn't you?
I guess the state could come back and say, "I'm sorry, we're not going to pay you the per meal amount that we said we were. We're going to pay you something less because we don't have that money." But what more likely they're going to do is, yes, we'll continue to pay the $3 and whatever that is the amount we identified, but that has to come from somewhere else. And so it's a reduction of what's available for K-12 in general. So whether it's at the local level or the state level, it's coming out of K-12.
What are you thinking we'll do for using up those ESAR dollars so they're not in our bank account when the feds come knocking?
We have activities in place in the current year and in the planning stages for next year that would fit within what we've already put forth in our budget. It would just be more of that, so additional teachers, the VIP programs, some of the one-time staff that we've put in, in place in the current year are things that would fit within that learning loss teacher line item that we can just move things around.
So these will be limited-term contracts since it's one-time money, is that what you're saying?
They already are.
Until we'll just extend those for another year?
Or free up the resources that are currently planned, so that, so particularly for the high-support schools, those six schools, we need to set those resources aside. If we take it out of ESAR and free up resources in the general fund, we'll take the resources out of the general fund and put all of those six schools into the differentiated funding fund, so that nobody loses any money. It's just which bucket it comes out of.
And hopefully we have money in the savings bucket when ESAR goes away to keep doing that, but we'll have to see. Insurance, Bill, is that something we're just going to, is that part of contracts? Is that something we can just increase the cost that we're going to be charging our staff and families, or? That was a pretty big number.
So, we had a meeting...
I know we have some one-time money, but longer-term?
So the Benefits Committee had a meeting a couple of weeks ago to review the financial status of the fund. We get projections from Hub International, which is our benefits consultant. Then, at this time of year, we're getting the renewals from both Kaiser and UMR. And UMR's a little different because we're just paying, that's our self-funded plan, truly self-funded plan, so we're paying whatever transactions are happening. So it's on us to project, and the consultant to project, what that looks like going forward into the future. For Kaiser, as a fully insured plan, Kaiser comes forward and says, "We need a 15% increase." And we say, "Oh, that's not going to work for us." And so the consultants go back and forth, and we had, I think we landed on 10-ish as an increase from Kaiser. So between, we don't want to have the rates spike and come back down from year to year, right? So this is trying to smooth things out a little bit. We have language in the employee agreements that speaks to increasing the rate, the district contribution at two times inflation or 5%, whichever is less. And so that concept of language is where the 5% district contribution increase came from. And the 8% dependent increase is not trying to make up for that difference overall, but is in line with inflation. So between both of those, we're, will still likely, again, it all depends on the usage, be slightly underwater for the fund, but because we have those couple of good years, that it won't be a detrimental impact. The other challenge really that we have is just the timing on the whole program, right? So we are getting at this time of year, mid-ish March, these renewals and the projections, and we're right in negotiations, and the open enrollment for benefit plans is like April 10th for a month or so. So they don't align well between what the renewal increase is, what negotiated amounts are, and when people have to open enroll. So as we're moving forward, and I committed to this to the Benefits Committee, is we're going to start talking much earlier. So next year is the first year of implemented $25 per month for the Gold Plan, an employee contribution. So most every district everywhere has some sort of employee contribution for their own benefit. This is the first year, we had planned to put it in place last year, but again, because of this timing challenge with employee negotiations, it got pushed off for a year. So again, that's getting put into place for next year. And so we'll have to have tough conversations. We're not changing the plan design for next year, but we'll have to have tough conversations about, do we increase that $25 per employee contribution? Do we reduce the benefits? Do we increase co-pays, right? These are all the moving, the levers you can move on the health insurance fund, but we need to have those conversations earlier because it's challenging that there's benefits referenced in employee contracts, but there's also a reference to taking the recommendation of the Benefits Committee. And so you can't have both. You can't say you're going to take the recommendation of the Benefits Committee and then argue that your contract doesn't allow for that. So, anyway, it's starting the conversation sooner so that we're better situated earlier in the year to make the recommendation and have that go forward.
And that $25 per employee, is that flat? Because that hits, obviously, bus drivers differently than it hits teachers or principals, but it's a flat amount? It's not a...
It is typically a flat amount, from what I've seen in other districts, not a percent of salary or something like that.
Or a category, if you make this much, under $25,000, then you only have to pay 15. We aren't doing it like that.
No, or that's not what's in place right now. It is a flat dollar amount that's, there's a lot of complexity to this, right? So anybody who works half-time gets full benefits. So if you work half-time as a starting teacher, you're making 25, 6, 7,000, whatever it is, versus full-time as a starting teacher, versus half-time as a senior teacher, versus, so all of those complexities are, would be challenging because you're going to have different dollar amounts hitting the different employee groups differently, or the same employee group differently. So it's been brought up, it hasn't been...
Yeah, I was actually thinking across employee groups, not within the same employee group, thinking about the paras and the bus drivers, that it would hit them the slightly larger impact than it would hit our teachers.
Right. Now, there is still the no-cost to the employee plan, the silver plan, that is available. So there is a no-cost plan available...
Just fewer benefits or higher co-pays?
Yeah.
Okay. That's an interesting quandary to have, be the Benefits Committee or by contract, or you pick.
Exactly.
Right. Looking at your crystal ball, have you, they done enough figure setting for us to get a sense of where we're going to be this year, or should we wait till your next presentation?
We're going to have to wait.
That's fine, I figured that'd be the answer.
Yeah, there's been minimal information. The only thing I've heard of late is, everybody's waiting for the deadline for filing with the title board, which is like the 23rd or 4th, right? So that the referred measure, the grand plan with the governor and all that can happen. So there's radio silence on a lot of fronts related to that. There's, from the School Finance Act, quote, "We're in a good place because we can pivot one way or the other and have good arguments to counter whatever comes forward." So that is an indication that people don't really know what's going to come forward, right? So just that being prepared to beat back whatever changes are suggested that might not be beneficial overall.
And it'll be interesting, because aren't we headed towards almost being fully self-funded, given potential property rate increases coming up?
It's rapidly approaching that.
So there'll be some interesting conversations. Anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you. We'll move on to your next presentation.
The mid-year, yes.
The mid.
So this will go quickly. So the mid-year analysis is focused not entirely on the general operating fund, but when looking at other funds, it's really if there is something particularly of note that needs addressing either in the current year or for the next fiscal year. fiscal year. So the purpose of the mid-year analysis is to monitor the current fiscal year, right? So the quarterly financials are what has transacted up until that point. The mid-year analysis is taking into account the projecting out salaries and benefits in the general fund in particular because small percentage changes can really create a large dollar impact, both positively and negatively as to how those trends are. So that's either something that needs to be corrected in the current year or corrected in the next fiscal year if there are insufficient funds available. It's also to anticipate the available year-end balance, to fund balance, to inform planning going forward into next year. Identify budget items that may require additional investment or restructuring in the next fiscal year and identify opportunities for improvement in our budget projections for the next fiscal year. So again, it's just a deep dive. The process for horizontal movement on teacher salary schedules, we've changed that a little bit, but historically it's been if you turn it in by October-ish, you get to have that retro to the beginning of the year. And so that's hitting in like the November and December payroll. So by the time we get to the December payroll, folks are sort of at their salary that they're going to be for the rest of the year. So that's where that projecting out for the remainder, the last six months of the year, is most beneficial to do it in the middle of the year. So some significant observations from the general fund, again, total revenues projected at 100%, so not under-collecting or over-collecting. There are two lines, so over-collecting in the interest, as I mentioned, but under-collecting in the indirect costs. The rate, the indirect cost rate was adjusted downward and wasn't built into the budget, so we're under-collecting in some of the indirect costs related to grants. So those are offsetting each other. Total expenditures are projected at 98.1% of the revised budget, and this is all within the compensation area, so salaries and benefits. This is, again, 2%, and 98, that's a, not quite an A+, but you know, a solid A. But that's still seven-ish million dollars difference because of the amount of salaries and benefits we have. So again, it's a, it's a check to make sure are there particular employee groups that are different or jobs? And then coming up with some of the reasoning and rationale behind that is that there are vacant positions, there are, has been turnover, higher turnover than expected, so attrition savings, all those pieces are what we start to look at as we go forward into building the budget for next year. Does that mean that we truly have space available within the budget to expand? Or is it just that there were vacant positions and once those are filled, so it's truly a one-time savings and not an ongoing savings? So again, we go through all funds. We ask the, the fund managers to review their funds and make sure that there's nothing particularly off-track that would need addressing in the middle of the year. We have the identified changes there, the interest income, the audit adjustment, for the CDE audit adjustment, so when they come through in the count, our kids, this is the 2018-19 October count and the 2017-18 transportation reimbursement. So CD, yeah, their CDE is a tad behind in their auditing. So again, as those come through, we owe them money or they owe us money, depending on how far we're off. But it's a very small dollar amount that's in that line item. We do call it out separately. Yeah, it hasn't, oh, it's in the, it hasn't been transacted yet. $24,750. So next to nothing. Or no, it's $49,000 in total, so a little bit more than the $25,000 that we have budgeted. So pretty small in the grand scheme of things. Indirect costs, as I mentioned, and then no other significant variances. Staff compensation, just under 98%. Normal fluctuating staff costs and hourly positions, the activity of just being able to hire and maintain folks, non-personnel. So we always project to fully expend the non-personnel budgets. We know that they won't be fully expended. There's always school resource allocation carryover, there's always textbook carryover, but those are either dollars that will be carried forward into the following year and aren't really available to spend or reallocate. So while we could go through the process of saying, we think we're going to underspend the SRA by $500,000, then we would need to track that going forward and make sure we don't spend that twice. So it's worth just saying, we plan, it's budgeted, the authority exists and all the folks that manage these line items to spend those dollars. So we'll just plan that it's going to be spent and if it isn't, it typically ends up in carryover anyway and goes forward into the next year. There's certainly the ability to spend between line items or object types. So equipment versus supplies versus a purchase service. So those line items aren't going to be exactly as budgeted. There never should be an expectation that there is and, because most budgets are managed to the bottom line, whether it's at a school level or a department level. So it's, it's, there's the ability to move dollars between line items. No variance in reserves and then growth of about 7.1, 7.2 million additional fund balance from what was budgeted. So we had a $7.2 million budgeted fund balance and this will about double that. So that's the mid-year analysis, that we are on track, underspending in salaries and benefits a little bit and nothing looks particularly askew in a negative way.
Questions? Kitty?
Yes, so for the indirect cost reimbursement, that's reimbursement by the state to us or?
No, it's a, it's a percentage that we are allowed to charge to some grants. Most federal grants, IDEA, Title I, all the title grants, SR funds. So it's annually calculated. So we submit all our line item transactions to the, to the state as part of the audit. So it's one of the pages that's included in the bound audit document is this comparison of year to year. So we send all this information to the state and the state has a calculation that creates this indirect cost rate and say, this is what you can apply. There's a restricted rate and an unrestricted rate and you can apply those to different grants. Some grants specifically say you cannot apply indirect cost. Some grants say you can only do it for personnel and not for stuff. So there's, there's some rules that go wrong with indirect costs.
Okay, so what percentage of our indirect costs do we typically get?
It's about 5%.
Okay, so not a lot.
Right.
And on the property taxes election, does that mean the override?
Correct. That is the, the general mill levy override as opposed to the transportation, what's in the transportation fund and the operations and technology that's in that fund.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Anyone else? So I think we heard at a presentation last week that our percentage of students qualifying for special education services have gone up some. So I'm just interested in the reimbursement number. I'm guessing that that number from the state isn't going up despite all the rhetoric around all of the great increases that we're seeing with inflation and all of that. That's my understanding is these increases in sped from the state were mostly eaten up by inflationary increases.
The per-student amount that is the reimbursement from the state has not been increased by much. It's not tagged to inflation or anything like that. It's a per-student amount. The overall pool of those categorical reimbursements is increased by inflation. So transportation, English language proficiency, talent and gifted, those are all increased as part of Amendment 23, right? Base funding plus the categoricals. But as the overall number of students in the state grows, students with special needs, that number may or may not keep up with that. It doesn't keep up with the excess costs for highly impacted students, which really severely impacts small districts that don't have the resources, the, the staff and the programs to provide services for students, where the students have to go to a facility outside their district that can cost tens and up to $100,000 a year. So the $2,500 that the state reimburses is, doesn't quite cut it.
Well, and they don't even give us close to inflationary increases on our tier-two students, correct?
Yeah.
So this number is still, we're still having to put, at some point it'll be interesting to know.
The proposal that's out there is a fairly robust increase for next year, if it holds true. The 40 million, is that the number?
But last year they gave us an increase and then applied it across all the categoricals, so it kind of diluted it, didn't it? Any other questions? This is really helpful, Bill. Thank you. Any, so when is our next budget presentation and update?
April 18th is the preliminary budget. Standard presentation on that. Work session, we'll do a work session and a regular session presentation on that.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
So we have one action item. Is there a motion to approve our action item, personnel items?
So moved.
Moved by Kitty, seconded by Stacy. We'll wait for Laura. Can you call the roll, please?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Neznik?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, I hope everyone has a good spring vacation and we'll see everyone in April. Call it, call it in. Motion to adjourn, Stacy?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, thank you.